stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again, and welcome to our board meeting of this evening. Just for your point of reference, behind everyone in the audience and here, you have the exit sign there and off to your right as well. Just like to just do a little housekeeping up front. I'd like to take a roll call. Trustee Barringer?
Barringer's present.
Jesse Ferraro?
Ferraro, present.
Trustee Carl?
Present.
Trustee O'Connor?
O'Connor's present.
And Major Weyer, thank you so much. Next order of business is the department reports as submitted by the department heads, and can I get a motion to accept them as submitted?
Carl will make that motion.
Can I get a second, please?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion, call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
And Weyer, aye. So Carrie, next order of business is the approval of the board meeting minutes of March 5th. Can I get a motion to accept as submitted by the clerk?
Ferraro will make the motion.
Barringer will second.
Discussion, call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Weyer, aye. So Carrie, thank you. Next order of business is budget transfers and modifications as submitted by the treasurer. Can I get a motion to accept them?
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion?
Yes, what's the PD vehicle insurance recovery?
Yes, do you ask me what that is?
Yeah, what is a thousand dollars?
Yep, so we had a vehicle that was hit, was involved in an accident. Since it wasn't our fault, we reached out to our insurance carrier, and we actually asked them to represent us in the claim against the insured on the other side, and as a result, the thousand dollar deductible that we had to pay on our policy was then reimbursed to us, and we just got that check.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no further discussion, call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Weyer, aye. So Carrie, thank you. Next order of business is Fred Barone, court attendant, resignation. Trustee O'Connor?
Be resolved. The board of trustees accepts with regret the resignation of court attendant Frederick Barone from the justice court effective May 1st, 2024. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Carl will second.
I was informed the other day that Mr. Barone had asked to extend his time to May 8th. Have you heard that at all?
No.
Okay, so what's the effective date right now?
May 1st.
Okay, so I'm gonna change that motion to May 8th. So if you could just reiterate, May 8th?
Sure. Be resolved, the board of trustees accepts with regret the resignation of court attendant Frederick Barone from the justice court effective May 8th, 2024. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Carl will second.
Okay, call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Weyer, aye. So Carrie, thank you all. Next order of business, the appointment of Amanda. Sorry, Amanda. Moreno, to a full-time position, clerk for the village court. I need a motion to accept that appointment as per Judge Strauss.
Carl will make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry to interrupt. I thought you were asking me something.
Yep. Okay, any discussion? Please call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Weyer, aye. So Carrie, Amanda?
Welcome aboard.
Aboard.
Thank you, have a great night. See you soon, okay? Okay, I don't have any old business, new business, Department of Public Works surplus for the Auction International. Is it us? I think it is us. Let's take a peek. I'm sorry, one second, please.
I hear.
Okay, where a state law requires equipment no longer needed by a municipality be sold at their fair market value after declaring its surplus no longer needed, now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees accepts the recommendation of working leader Chiopetta and declares the following equipment surplus to the needs of the village and authorizes it to be auctioned off through Auction International to the highest bidder. Equipment to be auctioned is as follows, two Boss nine-foot snowplows, unknown model number, large generator on a trailer, unknown model number, and an X-Mark mower, model LZ 5902K, excuse me, DKU 725A1, serial number 4001-00523. I need a motion to adopt this resolution.
Barringer will make the motion.
Second, please.
Carl will second that.
Okay, any discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Weyer, aye. So Carrie. All right, next order of business is a water payment plan request from account number 4205. Trustee Carl?
Yep. Resolved, the board of trustees approve the payment plan for water account number 4205, giving him the opportunity to pay his outstanding balance of $3,114.52 over a period of 12 months with equal monthly payments of $259.55 due on the last day of each month, with the balance to be paid in full by March 31st, 2025. The regular quarterly bill must also be paid by its due date, otherwise the installment agreement will be in default, and the full payment plus all cease penalties will be due at the time of the time and water service will be terminated immediately. And I'll put that in the form of a motion to grant that with some discussion, let's.
Yep.
O'Connor will second.
I wanted to, yeah, I just want to ask a question. So I know it's a high bill. Was it a new house someone moved into?
No.
It's 83 Franklin, and it's a two-family house, supposedly two-family house. Drove by the other day, it's a rental. I don't know if it's a legal rental, but it's a rental.
Well, also, according to the village clerk, this was re-lebbed, this was re-lebbed to the village taxes last year.
And I did have, and I apologize, I did have the four bills.
Yeah, she gave.
We have them. She gave them to us.
Yeah.
So I'm.
You think I would have, wouldn't you?
I'm a little.
I'm not crazy about it.
Oh, here it is, sorry.
I'm a little concerned when I got that later on today, that that was.
The other bill.
That was re-lebbed to the village taxes last year.
Oh, this isn't it. Yeah, sorry.
So.
I mean, I have no problem, but obviously, they have to pay it by a certain date, and then they have.
But again, it's been levied already. It's been done once before. Obviously, there's a, you know, there's a history with this, so I don't agree with it, not at all. Not a whole year? $300,000? That's insane.
So just for the board, and I did ask for, I think I did get it, and it may actually be on here. So I went ahead and pulled out the four quarters, and since it was re-lebbed, meaning that it went from the property owner's bill, it was re-lebbed, as trustee Carl just said, and it was put on taxes, that was paid.
Yep.
But then, he starts out with the May bill as a zero balance, and over the past four quarters, he winds up with penalty accruing, doesn't address the bill, and the bill has a couple of addresses in it. So there's a pattern here. So this thing goes from zero to 3,000 in a very short order. And frankly, the water bills are very high, and he should also be recognizing that. I would be more.
So there's a lot of water usage.
There is. I mean, there's a lot of penalty there, but there is a lot of water being used, and I'm sorry, I had it.
Well, there.
Yeah, I have it now. I didn't see it till right now.
There must be high occupancy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we need to look at that. And then as far as whether or not we want to issue anything like that, you know, I am concerned about, you know, we had adopted a policy many years ago where if you incurred the cost, you paid the bill. There was no room. And then we started to kind of, I guess, put a little more, not effort, but a little more thought into it, and certain folks might have gotten a little relief, given whatever, but I don't know if this is one of them. Mr. Carl, do you?
I, you know, I put it in the form of a motion so we could get into discussion.
Yeah, I'm seeing a few different names on this.
I'm concerned because, again, we would be easing up on the penalties. And 60,000, I'd say one building quarter was 60,000 gallons of water, which is relatively high, even for a two-family house, so.
What's the average, you would say?
10 to 15?
18, 20,000, give or take.
Did you give me those four quarters? But it's on my iPad?
It's such a separate email.
Yeah, it was an email.
It's not part of our meeting?
No.
Yeah, that came the last minute.
Oh, it can't be tested?
Yeah, you go to your emails.
It says commercial account. Is it a commercial account?
Letters, emails, and go from the latest one.
Does that mean anything? John, it says commercial account on one of these?
It's a multifamily house. Well, again, the last one was 60,607 gallons of water for three months.
That's okay. Sorry.
I think that's.
Okay. I'm sorry, I got my bills, thank you.
That's a pretty good indicator that there must be many people.
Yeah.
It's a small house. It's that little white house, very narrow.
Two doors, two entrances in the front?
Yes, two entrances, yes.
So is it side by side?
Consumption 59,000, one building quarter is 59,000.
This is what I have, if that's the correct house.
That's it. You see the two doors?
Mm-hmm.
83 is the one on the right. That one on the left is 81.
Okay.
It's 83, correct?
Yes.
Yep. 56,000, he's got, there's some very high water consumptions here. Well, I, you know, I'll leave it to the board. I put the, put the motion out there to accept the payment plan, but we've got some further information.
I guess because the motion's on the table, we have to deny that, and then just deny the whole thing if we want to.
All right, so the first thing was to approve the payment plan. We had a first and a second, got into a discussion. So we're either keep the motion on the table, or we decline to do that, and then someone make a motion that we deny it. So if we want to go that way, let's go that way.
All right, well, I'll rescind my motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so I think what we need to do is, I need a motion to deny the application for a payment plan for this water account.
Ferraro will make the motion.
Okay, can I get a second, please?
Carl will second.
Okay, any further discussion? Call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Weyer, aye. So Carrie, thank you. Next order of business is the authorization, which is agreement for the purchasing, the sale of the street lighting facility with Orange and Rockland Utilities in the Village of Monroe. So this.
There's a bunch of stuff up here, different.
Yeah, let me just go back. I apologize. Let me just open up now.
Six C is one, right off the bat.
Yeah, there is a bunch of six Cs, yeah. There's the first one, and then it goes from there.
Okay, so yeah, there's a lot of legalese, folks, that I wouldn't concern myself with as much. It's been vetted by both myself, police, the lighting company, everybody's had a way at it. At the end of the day, I think, does everybody have that page, Kim?
I emailed it to them at the last minute, and you have that on the page.
Okay, so everybody should have a separate email? Okay, if you want, please, let's go to the separate email. Let's go back to a separate email, and it should say under, okay, at 4:21 PM, I believe. Nope, it's not that one.
No, it's not that one.
That does say more information on the street lighting.
No, it's the one that gives the pricing. That's the one you're looking for.
That's the one I'm looking for, yeah. Where is that?
No, but when I look at that, it's a water bill.
No, it's not. You gave us the wrong one. It's not there.
Okay, so nobody has it?
No.
I saw it. It's on here somewhere.
It should be on the last page.
Maybe it's under something else.
I read the whole darn thing.
The last page of what we got is this.
Okay.
So we didn't send it, thank him?
No, I saw it.
And you said I have it?
I saw the numbers, 300-something thousand.
342 is what it is.
It's on here somewhere.
So you've looked into before making this deal?
Yes.
That there's no feedback from our lights that will, we will be owned, we will own.
There's no feedback back onto the O-N-R that they could get us later for damaging their.
No, as a matter of fact, the license, not the license, but the contract that we're signing, we will become the rightful owner of all products that are up on these poles. So we're going to acquire both the LED-style lights that already have been changed and upgraded since, and may consider, might happen until we get these new lights up. So we're going to own everything, whether it's LED or high-pressure lighting.
No, I'm concerned about, let's just say there's an accident, pole was knocked down.
Insurance.
And that light gets shorted out, and something happens, it shorts out, and it goes back to something that's sensitive within the O-N-R, and it blows it. Are we responsible for that?
Who's ever hit the pole? Here it is, right here, 342-046. Oh, I'm sorry, 342-016, and that was on page?
I have the thing.
Page seven, page six of 24.
Of which six, though, John? Six, one, C1.
It should say Village Manual Purchase Agreement Doc. Six C Purchase Agreement Doc.
Okay.
And then go to page seven, I'm sorry, page six, and the numbers are there. This has 465 lights. I thought we were at 50-something, were we not? 508? Did you find it?
Yeah, I see it. Well, what I have here currently right now is 465 overhead and 73 underground. So if you look at the 465?
Yep, that's overhead.
And then the 73 for a total of 538.
All right, I see that now, okay.
Yeah, it's right here.
And that's the more accurate.
Now, once we get this out of the way, where are we with Steve Harriman? Are they, is his group the ones that are coming in?
Yes.
And swapping all the heads out and putting all LEDs in?
So real term is the contractor, procurement company that's going to do this. And what's happening right now is O-N-R has given us this proposal. This proposal was signed off on. The clerk had sent it back to O-N-R, and we're waiting for the license or the ability to close that deal. It actually is a closing. It's an actual physical real estate closing, so we're waiting for that to happen. The PSC gets involved, and so it's all these boxes that are checked off. So to your question, real term, having this in their hands now, immediately goes out to procurement. We already picked the product. We've already gotten established a number. So now they're going to go out to procurement, they're going to go out to procurement, and that is going to lead them to ordering the product and start to tentatively schedule a plan going forward.
All right, so.
They have a few in line.
So the next, the next question I have would be, and this has been two-plus years in the making. Are we, are we going to bond this out? We're going to do a five-year ban, or are we going to, we're going to pay for this out of fund balance, or what are we going to do?
What the board did was, we took out the money, it's already out. We have the money, well, we have the ability to get the money. So we took out a water expansion on a bond, on a ban. We took out this, we took out the Pelican, and we took out the kiosks. That became X dollar. That's already there. The funding is there. We just have to pull the trigger by paying the bill. Once that happens, the funding is there for the five-year number. And it's a ban because if, should we get better bond numbers, we can bond this over a number of years. Infrastructure like this has a shelf life, I think it's 30 years. So you can go out as far as that to get this thing repaid. But this should actually create enough savings that more than sufficiently pays off the debt service.
Okay, all right. Well, let's close the deal on this so we can get these lights upgraded because I tell you, you're going to see a vast difference in lighting.
Agreed.
I mean, I have a LED, it took a few weeks, the one in front of my house, it took a few weeks to get adjusted to it. But it's a gathering point for the folks.
Sure.
It's bright, and you.
Not too bright, right?
But, no, it is. But, you know, you get on these streets like Freeland Street and Still Road, where you got, you have people walking. It's going to make a big difference. I don't know if you've been on 208 at night. They put all LEDs out, 208 in Village of South Blooming Grove. And it really illuminates it up, a whole big difference. So that's what we can look forward to. Let's do it.
Okay, so we had a first and second? Who was the first and second, please? I'm sorry. We did.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a first?
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Ferraro, second.
Okay, further discussion, call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Thank you. Okay, just one moment, I want to take a note here on something. Just if you remind me tomorrow, when we speak out to real, when we reach out to real term, I want to have a conversation with them. All right, so you put that into the memo. Okay, next order of business, trustee Barringer, Police Department Inventory Request to Dispose of.
Be it resolved, the board of trustees declares the following, police department non-working equipment surplus and of no value, and authorize its removal from inventory and disposal. Pitney Bowes K7MO Mail Station Meter, serial number 6943120. This machine is outdated and is being decommissioned by U.S. Postal Service. Taser X26P, the following tasers are expired and not usable for department operations. Serial numbers X12007WVF, X12002AM8, X120069M9, X1200695K, And I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Carl will make the second.
Discussion, call a question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Weyer, aye. So Carrie, thank you. Next order of business is the authorization to appoint Lang and Tully, who is currently our village engineer for the Services of Fire Inspection and Code Enforcement Services. I need a first?
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will second for discussion.
Okay, let's have it.
I looked at their numbers. Have we advertised yet for the Assistant Building Inspector position that's been vacated with a retirement?
Yeah. Zero responses.
Zero responses.
And I called for a list, and there is no list.
There is no list.
But there was an active test to be given, which just happened, I believe in January. And from what I know from that list, there's about 18 candidates that took it. But civil service processing, I think, what's the lead time, three to six months? So I'm not quite sure how that works, but they take a test that you basically, you know, black out the little dot, and it stands with a computer, and that's turned into a three, six-month wait. I don't really know why, but. So we're waiting for that. And the concern I have is, so if you look at the list of 18, and we, you know, bring them in for interviews, and let's say we bring in 16, and of the 16, maybe seven are interested, and we like them, and they come back, and out of the seven, we find, you know, a couple of candidates we like. We can actually offer a candidate the job with the ability that should they pass the exam, we could appoint them. But if the exam comes back and the top three don't reflect the person we choose, we have to go back to that list, which means that the person that we may take in advance of that list, which is three to six months out, may not be the person we can hire based on civil service law. So while I'm very willing and able to violate that for the purposes of our village, you know, as benefit, that would be a problem, and I would feel bad if we pick somebody and then that person cannot, at the end of the day, be the candidate. That would be a problem for me. So we're kind of stuck in between, which kind of leads me to why, there were two reasons. Number one, our building inspector is out, our full-time building inspector. We don't have a full-time person next to him. We have, you know, three part supporting staff, three part time, and they're all capable of supporting the full-time building inspector being out.
You said he's out?
He's on vacation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so my first order of business that I reached out to you folks was to have Lang and Tully in place should we need them. And I verified that again tonight. It's not about, you know, just having him come in. I spoke with the clerk in the building department, and she said we shouldn't be needing him during Jim's absence. He's kind of arranged his schedule not to include any time, you know, any appointments based on him being out for the week. But should there be, whether it's a fire or some necessity or some emergency, Lang and Tully is available to come in and do that work. Plus, we have Ron and Frank to do that. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing is, because we don't have it, we haven't been doing fire inspections and/or rental inspections. And the rental inspections, I'm working on a process right now with the building department clerk. And we're figuring out who's what, and that's a big lift, but we're working on it. I just got a list of every single property in the Village of Monroe. I received that through our planner just today. And we're trying to reconcile that against what we currently have on a rental registry. So that's some work we can do, but we have to get into that. And right now, we're not doing fire inspections, at least not to the number we need. Based on the current program, every three years, we've got over 600 fire inspections, so call that 200 a year. And by the time you move around to the other two zones, you go back to the first group. I'd really like to see that thing, our docket, get cleared, because I know we're behind in that. And that's where Lang and Tully, so if we said, okay, Lang and Tully, we're going to take you out two days this week, two days next week, and so forth, that's going to be eight days. I suspect, I know, these probably could take 20 at a day, if you group them properly, I think we could start to pick up a lot. And that's the reason I'm mentioning it or asking for the board to consider. Nothing more, nothing less. I don't want to, you know, hire the guy, per se, but that's what these engineering firms are doing now. There's a couple of other firms that have taken on this role because they can't find inspectors anymore. No one's taking the work, they're taking the job. So those are the two issues, and the reason why I asked Lang and Tully to propose to us their work.
Well, another question, if we go through with this, is this an annual, is this a one-year contract? Are we locked into one year?
We're locked into nothing. We're locked into per hour.
Per hour?
Which is $97 per hour, for just about anything.
Yep, I got you, all right.
Can we limit, I don't want.
Not to exceed?
Well, no, I don't care about the not to exceed, if we need it, we need it. But I'd like to limit their scope to just looking for multi-dwelling houses.
Violations, you mean?
Yeah, violations and fire, as opposed to, but multifamily violations, not just garbage violations or trash violations. The multi-ones are probably the most serious for us right now.
Okay.
That and fire.
They go hand in hand, probably.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily want them doing what we do as a board, just driving around the village, looking at things and noticing things, and cars parked where they're not supposed to be parked and things like that. We don't need them doing that.
What we need is, and he actually said it today, I just happened to call him back today about this, and he actually said, listen, we're going to be the first order of business, you know, whatever we find, we're going to make, we'll reply to the building department and advise them of whatever we're sent out on, and then we're going to ask them to do the follow-up. Because we're the ones that are going to have longevity, our employees, they're the ones that are going to be doing the letters. They're the ones that are going to be doing the code enforcement in court and so forth. So, did that answer your question?
Yeah, pretty much. Where's this funding coming from? I know you still have.
It'll come off their lines, yeah.
Because you still have, you still have the assistant, right, what's ever left of her salary, this.
Yeah, which is vaguely.
Roughly six, six months of her salary. She left one in December. So you have that to at least get started with.
And I'd like to see.
We're going to have to plug a number in the budget for the upcoming year. But we got to, look, we got, there's a lot of problems out there. We need to.
Oh, yeah.
We need to get a handle on it.
Agreed.
Is there a way we can look into, we're talking about rentals and water consumption. Is there a way to look to see if a home really is being rented legally? is there a way to look to see if a home really is being rented legally?
Well, I think there's a few things you can do, uh, and, and, and to that end, uh, I've reached out to a couple of municipalities that currently have issues like us, and, uh, we're trying to set up a couple of things, I don't wanna discuss what towns they are, but they're dealing with this just as aggressively as we are. And I think what we wanna see us them do is tell us, what are the tools that we can use? For instance, fire inspections, if we suspect that we've got something, can we get into a home under fire inspection?
Right, 'cause it's really coming down to safety, we wanna be safe.
Well, absolutely, you wanna be safe, you wanna make sure the buildings are safe.
How would you, uh, what'd be the basis for suspecting, um, fire, not a being, not being-
Well, that's, yeah, so that's the challenge.
It's tough on, it's tough on single-family, a single-family home is a-
You're gonna have to do some diligence, uh, Marty, I think you're gonna have to find out from these other folks, what can we do that lawfully allows us-
Yes.
Entry, uh, inspection, uh, suspect, so if, whether it's water, whether it's some other issue, some violation of something, we've gotta find a way to get in. I know down in Spring Valley, they were able to get some things done, and get some violations.
Through the Board of Health, they were able to do some.
Board of Health. So, those are the kinds of tools that we're gonna need to get in. But we do have registered right now, three hundred and sixty-three registered rentals. So, we could actually start with that, and I think, one of the things that that does is, if you, if you start there with what's known,
Yeah.
I think you start sending the very clear message out there that your home needs to be compliant, 'cause it'll be in the letter saying, okay, we've got your group, we're gonna be doing certain things, uh, we need you to be on the same page. I think once that gets out there, you're gonna start seeing some other folks fall in the line, 'cause if there's a way to get in, we're gonna get in.
Yeah.
So this is just gonna be a, you know, as-needed basis?
That's it.
So we're not locked into paying that monthly or that yearly lump sum?
And/or weekly, you know, if, let's say this month, which has got ten more days in it, for instance, if we find that three of those days, we could use them, grenade hour window, that's twenty-four man hours, that's essentially a hundred dollars, so that's twenty-four hundred dollar bill, you know, and we'll pay it.
Yeah.
And we've got the funds to pay it. And the same thing next month, if it turns out to be where we could, we could pick them up for eight days, and it's a hundred dollars an hour, and, uh, so that's sixty-four hundred dollars. Uh, it's a limited product, I don't, it's not going to be, and he actually said he agreed, our engineer, he's like, yeah, you, you don't wanna stay on.
So they're contractual, they're not employees of the village, they're-
That's right, they're contractual, like, he currently is now, he currently, obviously Langantully, John O'Rourke, the principal, uh, is the, uh, engineer of record for the Village of Monroe Services on a lot of things. So they've actually, and he's, he was prepared to come in and do the inspections, uh, on the current contract, uh, and, only because he's done it in the past. And there were years, I understand, that the town's, uh, building inspector came in and covered for our guy, that I knew about. But now, uh, that could've been the case, and/or, uh, our engineer could've done it. So, we're gonna keep, we would keep, uh, really good records, both in terms of the, uh, clerk having, uh, access to their time in and out, you know, and the building department, we was probably send a memo out to the clerk's secretary to keep us, you know, weekly, what services, and what hours they're submitting. And if you could, uh, I'd like the, if the board decides to move forward, it's, uh, that the services would come out of, uh, the commensurate A-line for, uh, for labor, and/or, you know, I think it needs to go to labor, which then needs to be modified into the contractual obligations. 'Cause we pay them as a, as a, as a ten ninety-nine, as a, uh, engineering firm. But the funds could come from the, from the payroll line. So if you get me that too, A-line, so... So, what's the board say?
Better, I think we need to do it.
Yeah, I think we need it.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Because as long as we're not locked into an annual thing, you know-
Again, as long as it's, uh, you know, it, I, and obviously, we have to keep close hands, we don't wanna-
Close hands.
We wanna see some, uh, you know, real numbers, and not just made up numbers.
Sure.
But, uh, I'd like to see it focused, and not waste our time with, there's trash, or cars parked on the lawn. I wanna go after just-
Yeah.
Okay.
And I also think, if you could, Kim, just to make a note, that I wanna go, uh, at the next meeting, I wanna create a workshop, or whatever we wanna call it, I wanna do a very robust review of all our fees, 'cause our rental fee, our fire inspection fee is, you know, very, very low. I think that needs to be looked at, all our fees with regard to, uh, code enforcement, rental, fire, are all, uh, it all needs to be reviewed. Okay, alright, so we had a first and second?
Yes.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrelly, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Farrelly, aye, so carried, thank you. Alright, next order of business is the authorization for, um, Anthony Donato, uh, to produce three village signs, uh, here in the Village of Monroe. Let me just try to back out of this, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, which, uh-
Sixteen.
Six F.
Six F. Six F, okay, thank you. Was there, was there a proposal, uh, included, I?
Just did it in the email.
Okay.
Got some pictures.
Sure, so the proposal is for three signs at one point five inch, twenty-pound, high-density urethane insert, back with half an inch of M D O, same size as the existing signs. Uh, primed and painted in urethane paint, just like an automobile finish, the signs, uh, the sign's design will be true to the existing signs, bus will be updated. Okay, that's the bus for the short line, okay. Cost per sign is eighteen hundred, for a total of five thousand four hundred. Uh, the project has a rebate of one thousand, three new signs would be forty-four hundred. Project approximately install in the month of May, uh, we can install as the signs are complete. So let me just, uh, for the board, I'll give you a little background, so, he came in, uh, probably, I don't know, maybe the second, third year of my administration, I think, maybe? Do you remember, Tim?
I remember, it was a few years ago.
Yeah, and he took down the existing wood signs that were carved by, uh, Mr. Boone, and they were beautiful. Uh, I don't know the condition at the time, other than to say they weren't good. So, all the signs were taken down, the signs were sand-it stripped, and made ready for new, paint, which was done and applied. Uh, that paint subsequently to the sign itself, um, failed, and didn't hold up over time. So, he recognized that, the contractor, and felt a responsibility, so he gave us a thousand dollar credit, uh, on a new product. The new product, uh, is a, a urethane material, which is a inch and a half thick, and, um, it's, uh, carved, the sign would actually be C and C'd or carved into that, and then to that, uh, he would prime and then paint. Now, I see here, it's, uh, just like an automobile finish, he actually did a, do we have the, uh, M S Q, did, did he give us, like, a detail? Yeah, okay, yeah, so we have that, so it talks about the product, the base, and it talks about the paints in there too, I think, right?
Yeah, down here, fabricating, but you gotta remember, th- this is just packing material. It's just what you would get, a, 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 a small appliance in a box, has that packing material around it. It's just a little denser than that, that's what it is.
And I think there were two choices, either twenty-pound or fifteen?
Yeah, so, you know, uh, it, it, it won't hold up to, um, people banging against it, hitting it, it'll chip away.
Well, I, I have no, no experience in products.
Do people bang against it?
Well, you know, the kids, they throw a ball and it hits it, it could damage it.
So I know we're gonna have one on the corner over here.
Mayor's Monument.
And the other corner.
And then up Buddy Airplane.
It's just, uh-
I don't know where it is, but it's, is it across?
And it's a CNC machine with a router, and it just cuts it all out.
Well, listen, here's the challenge we have, so, when we did it the last time, uh, Mr. Boone gave us, through, uh, a person, they gave us the proposal for his services, and I wanna say it was forty-four hundred per sign, uh, which is thirteen thousand two hundred dollars. So the board has to make a decision, I don't know, it, I'm sure the man still does the carving, I don't know today if he does, if he does, great. Uh, but that, you're at thirteen-two. Uh, if the board needs to see the product, uh, then we need to postpone this until next meeting.
Well, what are we looking, um, I don't see anything on here about a warranty, does he give, guaranteeing us any kind of a warranty?
I, I don't think you can, again, it's just foam, very thick foam, and it's a-
It's rigid polyurethane foam.
Right, just, it's polyurethane. Uh, yeah, yeah, crash helmet. You know, and it's designed to crush, so your head doesn't crush, same thing will be true here.
But these are the signs that currently, that's the, that's the product, right?
Do we have pictures of them? Like, I mean, I know he, I know he makes, like, wooden cornhole signs.
It's on your thing there.
Yeah, I know, I have an issue with my thing.
That's okay, but it, it, you can-
No, it's on your, uh, it's on your, it's on your iPad.
Yeah, but it's, it's just foam, just gotta understand that, you know, you, you get a, um, uh, is that coming?
Well, I'd like to see us try to do something here.
Are you in executive session?
No.
Yeah, soon.
We're in a public session, so have a seat.
So, I mean...
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna last like wood will, that's the only thing, it'll look pretty, and as long as nobody touches it, it'll be fine. 'Cause this is gonna be at street level, these signs.
Right.
I mean, the price looks reasonable, I think, you know, those signs have been missing for a while, so-
Yeah.
Yep.
I think, uh-
Well, we can go ahead and-
Can we quiet, can you, uh, see what kind of a, um, you know, warranty or guarantee he'll give us on those?
Or at least for paint peeling, yeah, so, at least that.
Can you, can you just make a note of that? Okay, so what I'd like to do is have somebody make a motion, that, um, we will, uh, purchase, uh, or contract with Anthony Donato for the purchase, uh, installation, uh, the fabrication installation of three signs, uh, for the welcome in the Village of Monroe, uh, up at the airplane, two at the Mayor's Monument, and three at the Bus Depot, contingent upon, uh, satisfaction to the board for warranty, and, um, product retention.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Carl, a second.
Okay, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrelly, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Farrelly, aye, so carried, thank you.
Certainly, if it looks like it might be an issue with what Andy was saying, is to get Plexiglas put right over top of them.
That wouldn't be a bad idea.
That's what I was thinking of.
That wouldn't be a bad idea.
You know, if it, if it, if it looks like it-
They sell hockey glass, too.
Or even, when we, when, when you talk to Mr. Donato, um, show that recommendation by him, you know, as long as, as long as the moisture doesn't get behind it, you know, that's a problem. Um, but, it might be something to, to think about, at least it gives you another avenue of protection.
It doesn't actually have to be attached to the sign, if it's offset, having airflow.
Put the spacers in and put them in.
Exactly, that would be more than enough.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, I think it'll, I think it'll work out.
Right.
Alright, so, you, you may, you have that note? Okay, uh, next order of business is a discussion I'd like to have, uh, you know, I continually get quote, uh, complaints from residents up on Stage Road, with the, uh, the size of the vehicles that are going down that road, uh, that don't feel that they should be on those secondary roads like Stage Road, thank you, and, uh, as such, I wanted to have a discussion. We do have streets that do have weight restrictions, and, um, I'd like to talk to the board about, uh, a, either a complete prohibition and/or a weight restriction on what can go from Stage Road and Still, all the way down to Seventeen M, so, I wanted to just open that up for conversation. Barringer, you have any thoughts?
Well, I'm thinking if it's from Stage to Still, I feel like a lot of trucks use orange turnpike from Tuxedo area, and come all the way through, um, and I would say that is a concern. I, I would like to see a restriction, I just worry about the enforcement, how we, how we could do that.
Okay.
Well, again, uh, it, commercial vehicles, uh, I, I not only weight limit, but I'd like to see length limit. Uh, there are fifty-three foot trailers shouldn't be allowed on secondary roads.
Unless they're delivering to that house on that road, then they have to.
That, that, yeah.
Like a moving van.
So, size-wise, what are we talking about, like?
Well, twenty-
Tractor trailers, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tractor trailer is fifty-three feet long, plus the cab, that's, it, they're very long.
They are.
And weight limit could be forty, fifty thousand, sixty thousand pounds. On secondary roads, you don't need vehicles that big, you know, box trucks are more than a-
Especially on Stage Road is pretty narrow.
Yeah, right up there, by the end, yeah.
Stage Road, Stage Road has no shoulders.
None.
And it's-
Just a guardrail.
It's not, it's not a, uh, it's not a-
Is it made for, like, stage coach thinking?
It's almost a tertiary road, it's not, um-
Horse and buggy.
It's a horse and buggy road.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not designed for, for larger vehicles.
So what, I think from this discussion, what we should do is decide, um, do some, some homework. What's a, a, a small box truck, what's its weight, uh, gross vehicle weight, uh, and its length? And determine what can maneuver around the village without blocking traffic, and that's what we should determine.
Well, I think, you, you know, like, these Amazon vehicles, they're gonna come on here for local delivery, uh, they're probably around twelve thousand pounds, which is, you know, which is six tons, so that's not really intrusive, it's not-
No, that's, and most of them are small trucks or vans, that's not the, again, John told me that, uh, you didn't, uh, you can't limit what's on a state road, but, uh, those tractor trailers on Seventeen M, and they're trying to back into small, narrow spots, it's almost impossible, and they block the road.
Right, right.
Small, narrow spots piled full of wood pallets.
Yeah, yeah.
We have that now, yeah.
It's an issue.
I think it's, I, I, my personal feeling is that, uh, my initial reaction is no commercial traffic, other than local delivery, period. You know, so if you're getting a package delivered, or you're moving into a home, and you have a tractor trailer, or and/or a moving truck, that's, that's not attractive with a trailer, but it's just a straight job, but the largest size, so if you're getting something and receiving something, I could see that. But other than that, I think it should be a complete prohibition, because when those things are flying through, it's, you know, and you have, and you think about, whether it's the houses at Stage and Ry Hill, or the ones from Ry Hill up to, uh, Hobart Ward, you know, these folks, a lot of times, are backing out of driveways, and it's not easy. You know, and they can't, they can't safely do it, and then when you go from Hobart, or rather Greg Wenzel, down, those folks have challenges coming out of the driveway, with no traffic. Uh, so, I, I just think it should really be a complete ho, prohibition, because I think you're right, Tim, I think what happens is, they're taking these bypasses, and they're not coming up Seventeen M from Tuxedo on Seventeen to Seventeen M, they're taking all these shortcuts. And, uh, it shouldn't be a shortcut.
Now, what about, like, the coach buses, like, can coach buses come, or is, like, I don't know, the size of that, we have-
It's forty-five footers.
We have those coming down.
Yeah, but you got the same thing, just sitting here looking at the, uh, Scuny Monk Street, all trucks, commercial vehicles, having gross vehicle weight rating in excess of twenty-three thousand pounds, that's every day, every hour. Over there, tractor trailers, you, you know, I'm up the North Main Street Firehouse, you got coach buses, tractor trailers, whatever, cranes, well-drilling equipment. Um, and here, it's, according to this, not allowed.
And it's not, and, and there is enforcement, obviously, it's not a hundred percent enforcement, enforcement, but there is enforcement, uh, I know it, because we get that. You might wanna just add, uh, maybe we wanna have a discussion, the next discussion with the lieutenant, uh, have a meeting to discuss what enforcement we've had on these other roads, 'cause it, I think it's on Forest, it's on Scudymunk, it's on Franklin.
North Main.
And North Main.
North Main is falling apart, that road needs, needs some serious work.
So, uh-
Gotta start looking at Freeland Street too, because, I'll tell ya, it's, it's a matter of time. These tractor trailers come up, if they're coming from Seventeen M up, and they're barreling over that, and that light turns, there's been times, I've been sitting there coming out of my development, and I got a green light, and a tractor trailer's blown right through it. And it's happened more than once, and it's just, it, it, that's another road that's, um, limited shoulders, a lot of people walking on that road now, and I think that's another road that needs to be looked at for commercial traffic, especially the, the tractor trailers, 'cause that, you go down here on that bridge there that goes over to Heritage Trail, go underneath that and take a peek. Trail, go underneath that and take a peek, makes you wonder.
So, I think what we'll do is, let's, let's have a conversation with the department, let's set that up, and then, uh, hopefully, we can get into, uh, next meeting is what date?
The second of April, I think.
I mean, what is it, what are we talking about?
No, it's like, April second?
Second.
Alright, so let's talk about introducing a local law, whether it's a modification to the, uh, vehicle and traffic, um, chapter forty-three, article one, A, B, C, D, E, F, right? Which is actually article seven, so article one and article seven, we wanna be able to have that discussion with the PD, and then come up with a review of what currently is in existence, on the books, and what we wanna add, but Stage is definitely something I wanna see added, I think that's a problem, I really do. Things have just changed dramatically in the last twenty-some odd years, with the kind of traffic, and, uh, alright, I think we're all in agreement with that, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, I have nothing else on that, uh, the board have anything?
I don't.
No, I don't.
Um, where are we with the Village Hall renovations, have we...
Uh, right now, we're at, uh, we've got a, uh, I think a little bit of four sixty-six?
Yeah.
I believe so?
Mm-huh.
And, uh, we just have to make a decision as to whether or not that's excessive, I believe, but one of the things that's gonna happen, cause that's what I do for a living, is four sixty-six will become five sixty-six, take the stairs out, next thing you know, you find, oh, and two wiring, I, I don't know, there's a lot of holes in this building that, for the age of the building, uh, and then, once we, the board makes a decision on that, I think, uh, that'll lead us to our next path, which may be to consider other options.
Okay.
That's what I'm exploring now.
Alright, and then the only other thing I got is, uh, Plum House seems to have garbage bags, I don't know whether it's tenants or what, knock them out, and they just throw the stuff on the ground, doesn't even go in the dumpsters, and that's, uh, that's village property, and it's, it's, it, it seems to be getting worse.
Okay, so, uh, Kim, can you do, remind me tomorrow morning, I wanna call, uh, PD and pull off any tapes I can, say in the past week, cause I did notice them before I left town last week, um, let's see if we can find it in timeline.
Is there a way to mark off, like, where village property is, in some way?
Well, there is, there is a...
The markers are there.
Right, but...
Cause, you know what, you know the problem is...
Only we would know, right, it's like a post, right, like a...
Right, so, basically, it boils down to this, so, I own a home.
Mm-hmm.
I don't come there, I don't live there, uh, a property, forget about a home.
Mm.
I don't live there, I don't go over there, I don't enforce things there, I don't sweep my prop, I don't do anything, I just collect rent, so you have no understanding or knowledge or interest in the pieces that we're talking about as a quality of life for the village, that is a problem, and property lines or anything else, I think the only thing that honestly would do it, uh, which, uh, would be to remove the containers out, and put them down at DPW, which I did, twice threatened, and that prompted a meeting here, where the owners were being more diligent, and I think, compared to where we were four years ago, I think it's, it's a hundred percent better, uh, but we still get the conditions where a piece of furniture gets thrown out, a couch, a mattress, um, it's just about, you know, educating the tenants, they just come out with it, and they dump it there, cause they think that's where the garbage pail is, they don't distinguish what it is, or why it is, I don't know why some of the piles, just, some of the bags get dropped off and don't get put in the container, I can't answer that, and the fact that it's in front of the container tells me that the garbage has not been picked up from the carrier, cause otherwise, it would be crushed, because there's nothing to dump.
Nah, I've, I've watched them come out and they just drop it.
That's what I'm saying, that, that's my point, so I don't know why...
They don't even, they don't, the dumpster's not even full, but they just drop it and they walk away.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, so we have to, right, so if that's the case, then we have to just find them.
Okay.
Yeah, find them and, and try to address it, you know, we probably have to get back in touch with, uh, Fourteen Lake, I think it's Fourteen Lake, yeah, I think it's Fourteen Lake, okay, good?
Yeah, pretty much, yes.
Okay, alright, nothing further, anyone from the public who'd like to speak?
Good.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay, just wanna say, thank you, uh, so, good, alright, uh, I don't have anything